We have the roll call, please.
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Nathan Long.
Here.
Doug Bryson is absent and excused. Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Do we have any changes or agenda, changes or revisions?
No, we don't.
All right, minutes of the February 16th meeting, I need a request for approval.
I saw move as revised.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. Please limit comments to three minutes per speaker. Speakers should keep in mind they're being broadcast on live television. Do we have anyone that would like to speak now? My orders and resolutions, non-scheduled, public hearings deliberations. Do you want to read the particulars, Mr. Townsend, or would you like me to read this?
I think you need to read them.
Excuse me?
I think you need to read them. You've got all the sufficient specificity.
All right, Z O A 2016 dash zero one miscellaneous zoning code amendments. The proposed ordinance amends Title 17 zoning in L C M C seventeen dot seventy-two dot oh thirty to decrease the interval of time change for electronic signs from one hour to one minute. Amends L C M C seventeen eighty-eight twenty to allow the planning director to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance comprehensive plan zoning and plan maps. Amends L C M C seventeen dot fifty-two dot one sixty allowing the planning director to grant minor adjustments to required yard setbacks and amends L C M C seventeen dot fifty-two dot two thirty to require right-of-way dedication for walkways along the D River and continuation of the Head to Bay Trail. Yes, I do. All right, it is now six oh four P M. The public hearing on file Z O A 2016 dash oh one is now open. This public hearing concerns a city initiated proposal to amend the Lincoln City zoning ordinance. This group of miscellaneous amendments includes, as I said before, decreasing the interval of time change for electronic signs from one hour to one minute, allowing the planning director to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance comprehensive plan zoning and plan map, allowing the planning director to grant minor adjustments to required yard setbacks and requiring right-of-way dedication for walkways along the D River and continuation of the Head to Bay Trail. The Planning Commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral communications or testimony as well as information from staff and present a recommendation to the City Council who will hold an additional public hearing. The City Council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or take other action. Commission must take a few minutes moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the Commission wish to declare an ex parte contact or conflict of interest in this matter?
Your Honor, technically, we, as we discussed last time, we don't have a, this is a script from the, taken from one of the prior hearings where we had a mixed case of judicial and legislative hearing. So you probably don't have to cover ex parte today. If you do have a conflict of interest, you probably need to disclose that anyway, and I can't excuse you from that. So conflict of interest would be appropriate if you feel you have a conflict.
Seeing none, I will move on to the substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the public hearing procedures which have been adopted by the City Council. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any Planning Commission questions. After that, any person may speak up, speak for up to three minutes. If the Planning Commission has questions, time responding to any questions will not be counted in the time limit. If you wish to speak, write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Do we still require mailing address? We do?
You don't have to say it when you come to the podium.
No, we need it for feedback. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you have a written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will staff please present its report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. This first hearing is on four proposed amendments, and I'll go over them individually. The first one relates to flashing signs and, as I've said before, what we're talking about is this, on this sign for the outlets, just this part that has, can be changed electronically. Presently, the law allows the changeable part of the sign to change once an hour, no more than once an hour. The draft amendment would change that to once a minute or every sixty seconds instead of every sixty minutes. The reason for the proposed amendment is a couple of parties have expressed concern about not being able to put a digital sign on, on a changing sign, because, I'm sorry, a digital clock, because that needs to change once a minute, and they can only change once an hour. So a digital clock that's only accurate once an hour is kind of useless. But because of free speech concerns, we can't say that, you know, that a clock can change once a minute. We have to say, if anything can change, everything can change. So we couldn't, we couldn't say a clock, because that would be an unconstitutional content-based distinction. There, because of that, there are concerns that, I believe you got a comment with the staff report, the concern that while one sign changing once a minute is not that big a deal, when you start having bunches of them, you end up with, you know, a science distraction happening all the time. Actually, I was looking at something today, and while it's, it was a laboratory test, and it was about rats, it just was talking about, like, flashing lights distracts the rats, it makes them engage in riskier behavior, which I thought was interesting. And they're saying that presumably that happens with people too, because they're talking about in casinos, all the flashing lights and the noise tends to, as I say, tends to result in people probably making higher bets than they would ordinarily, because they have that, somehow that stimulates them to take riskier behavior. So the concern is that as these changing image signs become more and more prevalent, where we may have one or two that you can see at one time, eventually we'll reach a point where you'll see, you'll see many of them, and there'll be this one changing and that one changing, and people will become distracted, and so making roads less safe. One possible compromise, I'm not advocating anyway in any of these, is to say that there could be a limited area of a changing image sign that could be allowed to change, in other words, say, ten percent of the sign, maximum of ten percent of the sign or something, whatever you need for the, for a reasonable size, be designed to accommodate a reasonable size time readout, but obviously it could be, anything could be in that. So that's a possible compromise, assuming there's a need for the amendment at all. That's the first thing. I don't know if you have any questions about any of these, I'll do.
Well, if I was driving down the street, how many of these signs would I see that would be changing once a minute? Do you think, I mean, does Lincoln City average kind of?
Well, right now, there's, I don't know, there's probably ten of them in the city right now, but they're getting cheaper, and, you know, we get to, like I say, they're becoming more prevalent, and I think as they get cheaper and as there are more of them, then there's competition for people's attention. So if your competition has one, then you've got to have one in order to compete, you know, people will have that perception. So I think ultimately, I wouldn't be surprised to see them become the standard for signage. Okay? The next matters relating to initiation of zoning ordinance amendments presently, changes can come from the City Council, the Planning Commission, from the affected property owner, or from a resident. They can suggest text amendments and map amendments. There's nothing specifically allowing the staff, in particular, Planning, Community Development Director, to initiate proposed changes. So the proposal is to add a fifth option, keep those four, add a fifth one, allowing Planning and Community Development Director to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance. Importantly, in all these cases, there still would be the public notice of changes and hearings at the, both the Planning Commission and the City Council. So that's number two. Number three is the administrative adjustment. This is, when we talked about this two weeks ago, I actually, I misdescribed it, but what this is, is it would allow the Planning and Community Development Director to make minor adjustments to setbacks. What I said before was to dimensional standards, and I said setbacks in height, for example, but the way it's drafted is only to setbacks, only to the yard requirement. Importantly, it's a small change, be up to twelve inches at the most, or fifteen percent of the requirement, whichever is less. So for a five-foot required yard, a foot is twenty percent, so you wouldn't be able to get twenty percent, but you could get three-quarters of it, or nine, a nine-inch adjustment with a five-foot thing. Otherwise, if it's, it would be, the absolute maximum would be a foot. And it's not a, it's not something you get, or you even ask for before construction starts. What, in order to get a building permit, you'd still have to demonstrate compliance with the existing standards. But the intent of this is to remedy a situation where due to an error, something unforeseen, something unintentional such as a survey or error, that there's a need for an adjustment to the provision, to the standard. So it could allow, basically, it's handled administratively rather than having to go through a variance process. And the purpose of it is to correct a, an existing or a likely to happen noncompliance, and it's just standards that are in the ordinance and must not be materially detrimental to the purposes of the zone. And then importantly, it's a discretionary decision, which means it's appealable. If Planning, Development, Planning Director makes the decision, yes or no, you get it. That decision is appealable to the Planning Commission, also then appealable to the City Council. And if the Planning Director, for whatever reason, decides that it would be better for the Planning Commission to make the decision, then that can, the request can just automatically be referred to the, to the Planning Commission. And the applicant also has the option of asking for a variance, even if the Planning Director turns down the request for administrative adjustment, they still would have the right to add the request of variance, just as they do without this change. And the last one.
Back up a second, I've got a question about this.
Sure.
The appealable Planning Commission and City Council, if you said yes to a variance and somebody wanted to appeal that, how would they know that you'd said yes, and what would be their path to appealing it?
Since it's a, correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, since it's a discretionary land use decision, would we have to give notice to neighbors?
Well, other parties can appeal a director's decision, so not just the person that's applied for it. I don't recall what the notice, I thought you had to give notice under your code when you adopted director's decision. That would be the answer, if you have notice, then if somebody wanted to appeal a yes answer, would have notice that you had granted the variance?
Say that again.
Would there be notice going out that you had granted the variance so that somebody who wanted to appeal the yes vote would have an opportunity to know about it?
Certainly, we certainly can make sure that there is, even if the code doesn't already require it, it could be, it could be done.
Mr. Chair? If somebody wanted to appeal this, like a decision of a yes or a no, is there a cost for that appeal?
Yes, there's an application fee for an appeal.
How much is that?
A hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty dollars. The last is about just exceptions, exceptions to the public infrastructure improvement requirements. In the present code, this is about sidewalks. In the present code, when a property is developed, the property owner is required to put in curb, gutter, sidewalk, and half-street improvements, in particular putting in a sidewalk either in the public right-of-way if there's room for it, or if there, a sidewalk five feet wide, in the public right-of-way if the right-of-way is wide enough for it. If it's not, then on the property owner's property to dedicate a right-of-way for a five-foot wide sidewalk. What, this proposal affects, I guess there's two things, one relating to the, what we're calling the D River walkway in commercial zones. And you can see on this map, the commercial areas, and actually, the way the ordinance is written, the draft ordinance is written, it's the areas east of the highway. So we're talking about, this is the river here, and the highway coming down here, the D River and the state wayside. This property to the north of the river and east of the highway is owned by Urban Renewal, and that will be, it's one of the properties that the Urban Renewal Agency is looking at making available for development. So that'd be one of the properties, again, it's zone commercial, the properties to the east are not zone commercial, so they would not be affected. The others are, on the south side of the river, again, east of the highway, are these properties which are zone commercial, zone general commercial. But these, in this triangular area here, while they're zone general commercial, as you can see, actually are, maybe you can't see in this picture, but they're, they're developed residentially. And so they would, those would not be affected unless they were redeveloped with commercial uses. What we're looking at is essentially is the motel on the south side of the river, and what right now is the Union Fifty Club. When either of those properties were to redevelop, then they would be required to put in the, rather than a sidewalk along the street, to put in a sidewalk along the riverside. And they would, the requirement would be to do the same five feet that they're required to do now, plus provide a right-of-way for an additional five feet, for the city to put in another five feet, so there would end up being a ten-foot wide sidewalk, so eventually like a walkway along the river. With the intent that someday there would be a bridge connecting both sides, pedestrian bridge, as part of, as part of the Head to Bay Trail, but also just as part of, as a pedestrian amenity in the city as a general. So as I said, it must install a five-foot sidewalk adjacent to the streets, east of the highway is the proposal, five feet of sidewalk put in by the property owner with an additional five feet dedicated, so the city can put in additional five feet. And relative to the Head to Bay Trail, we have in our parks plan and in our biking, walking and biking plan, we also have the Head to Bay Trail running from property in the villages of Cascadehead all the way down to Solace Bay. The intent is to have an eight to ten-foot wide trail, the full way for bicycles and pedestrians. And what this proposal would do, and you can see the right-of-way on these maps, it's the red and black, we've got some of it, going through the villages of Cascadehead property up here in the north is that area shown in black on this. And additionally, since this map was prepared, it actually comes down West Elvis Lake Road and up Twenty Second Street, except for a little gap where there's a wetland, which the Public Works Department has gotten a grant to put in a boardwalk to close that gap. And then in the southern part, the D River is up here, we don't, we don't have any of the trail there yet, but we expect to do it, and also it would go through city-owned open space, so there is a trail network in there that could be included in this. The idea is in commercial zones, to, property owner would have to put in the five-foot sidewalk that they're required to put in now, and indeed, an additional five feet to the city for, the city to put in the additional five feet, so we could have a ten-foot wide trail. Residential zones is basically, well, actually substantially different, put in a ten-foot wide sidewalk, but they would get credit against their parks system development charges for the, it'd cost you the additional five feet. So it's basically an economy, economy of scale when you're putting in a sidewalk, rather than have to go, go do it twice, put it in once and you get, get the money off here in Parks S D C.
Richard, before you move on, I'm having difficulty understanding why they're, as like a different standard? Why would residential folks be required to put in a ten-foot even though they get a credit and?
They're, right now, in residential development, you're required to put in a five-foot sidewalk and to pay your parks systems development charge, which goes to, you know, to develop the city's park system. And this trail is part of the city's park system. And so basically, it's offsetting some of that with putting in the additional five feet of sidewalk, so you, the intent is that it be really nothing out of pocket, no more out of pocket than there would have been. We don't have that on, for commercial development, that S D C for commercial development. And this is an example of the Head to Bay Trail I showed you, to you two weeks ago, going, this is in the villages of Cascadehead property going through residential zone. And that's what I have.
What's ten feet there?
Actually, I think this is, right, this is eight feet. This is the existing sidewalk in the villages of Cascadehead, I think it's eight feet wide. So that's what I have on these four.
Questions, Commissioners?
Yeah.
About a discussion, huh?
Yeah, I know, we're going to discuss something.
We do that after we get.
After everything.
Public testimony.
All right.
Now's a good time to ask questions, if you'd like to.
Well, there's questions that we can.
I have one question. Isn't the Union Fifty Club currently being redeveloped now?
Yes, it is, but is, but, well, internally. And so the amount of work they're doing is not enough to trigger any external requirements, such as what we're talking about here.
What does, what is, what would be?
Well, complete redevelopment or fifty percent, more than fifty percent of the value of the existing improvements, then the whole site would have to come into compliance. Things like paving the parking lot would kick in, so.
In answer to the.
Curb gutter sidewalk, half-street improvement.
In answer to the earlier question about the notice, Kate's telling me two hundred and fifty feet is our standard for giving notice of decision, of the director's decision under the code.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Townsend? Thank you, sir. Now is the time for public comment testimony. I don't see any names on the sign-up sheet. Is there any person in the audience who did not sign up but wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Please, come up.
I'd like to start with a sort of.
Could may have your name, please.
I'm sorry, my name is Carolyn Gansho.
Thank you.
I'm hiding in the shadows so nobody can. Kind of a nitpicky question, but on the issue of the Planning Director bringing forth amendments or to the planning, is the Planning Director not a citizen? Would he not bring forth? What would the difference be, if any, bringing it forth as a Planning Director or as a citizen, or using a surrogate citizen?
I can answer that. As a citizen, you have to pay the application fee, which is, which is very substantial.
I really would like to say, I think that to disagree with the Planning Director costs a hundred and fifty dollars, makes it pretty much out of sight for a lot of the citizens of Lincoln City. I'm wondering why we need a ten-foot wide sidewalk anywhere? What kind of activity do you anticipate taking place that would require ten feet wide? Personally, I see this as simply more impervious surface in the city, and do we really need
Want me to answer? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, actually, two things. One is what we see on this, what we hope to see on this kind of, on the Head to Bay Trail is bicycles passing each other in both directions, and also having room for pedestrians, just making it a more comfortable width. It's not, we don't think of it as a sidewalk, but as a multi-use trail, though that also fills a role as, as a sidewalk in a lot of areas, but in a lot of areas it won't be because it'll be through, like, through the open space or what have you. As far as pervious, the, the part that was built south of Highway 101 down to Twenty Second Street, it actually is made from pervious concrete, so it's not, it's not impervious. So what we've been doing, what we've been doing is recognizing that, you know, the concern about more pervious surface and trying to minimize that.
How would you minimize the interaction between pedestrians and skateboarders and bicyclists and skaters?
I don't know if it's a bad thing to have people interact, but the idea is you don't want them to be run over. I understand what you're saying, yeah, and it's, it's about, you know, common sense and courtesy, I guess, the same as, as we, people do, just even if it wasn't a ten-foot wide trail, it was just a five-foot sidewalk, is to show courtesy.
Mr. Chair, what happened to the bicycle lane along the roadway?
There are some places where there would be bicycle lanes in the road, but again, this is, again, this is supposed to be a trail. The original intent was that most of it would be, let's see. Uh, the original intent was that, that most of it would be, uh, let's say, I'll say off-road, but also off, out of the, the road, um, corridor, but it proved to be, uh, economically and it was probably actually physically impossible to have something continuous from the, from the north end of the city to the south end of the city.
Right, if I could. Um, just to answer your question about, um, multiple, um, forms of traffic on the trail, um, if people stick to the right side, it works really well. And I know of one place in Portland where there's a lot of foot traffic and bicycle traffic all in the same place, it's on the Hawthorne Bridge, and they have, I don't know how wide that is, and there's a lot more people there, um, but it works really well, and they have signs showing the direction of walking and bicycles, and it, it's worked really well, I used to walk that quite a bit. And, um, and so there's ways to, to handle the traffic that are on the trails, just so they can get by one another safely. So I think there are ways that, you know, if we do have issues, then we can, I think, address them.
Not sure how, uh, feasible it would be, but, uh, how about a blue stripe for bicyclists or something, so that pedestrians are warned or, um, cautioned, uh, something less than warning, but alerted? I'm sorry, you wanted?
Well, I said, there are signs on the, on the trail, but like, where, where the existing part of it, where it crosses a road, you know, there's, there's a bicycle, oh, then the, the bicycle stop sign, there's also, it's, it's, it's signed at various places as, as a multi-use trail. My experience with them, I used to live, uh, on one in Virginia, and walking or running on that, or even when I was bicycling, if I was passing somebody, the, the usual thing was someone would, if you approached someone behind them, say, "On your left," and pass them "on your left" so that, so you don't scare them, you know, and, and warn them that you're coming.
How would we encourage that?
Well, I think people do that. It's, it's the, sort of, the ethic of a shared park. I, I, I've heard a couple of other anecdotes, I'll add my own. I was raised in San Diego where there are a lot of these, uh, 10-foot signs and, uh, a whole bunch more traffic. People cooperate.
I've seen a lot of teenagers that haven't developed yet.
That's true.
I'd like to add to what you said, I used a bike trail in San Francisco that actually was much narrower than 10 feet, and was also used by pedestrians. There was never any trouble on that, and I walked it and I also rode my bike on it. People were very courteous to each other, you know.
I hope.
Thank you very much. Are there any other people in the audience who, uh, did not sign up but would like to speak? Is there any comment from representative of public agencies? Um, seeing no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing in the record?
I'll make a mo- motion to, uh, close the public hearing in the record.
Second.
Uh, do we need a roll call for that?
No.
I'm a little vague on whether-
No, you, you can just, uh-
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I should just, uh, remind you, what we're looking for, uh, is a recommendation to the city council.
So what is the pleasure of the commission? It's time for discussion and deliberations.
I have.
Please.
I have a request, and, um, it's difficult for me to separate these out, so to make one action of a motion, um, for all four of them, all four of the ideas, the flashing signs, the initiative of a zoning ordinance, exception of yard, um-
Your honor, there, there's nothing wrong with making separate motions on them, and actually, what I think was gonna happen, where, uh, Mr. Apicella and I were talking about this before the meeting, but I think we're gonna break this up into four ordinances when it goes to the city council, so we don't have this problem.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, if we just go ahead and want to start deliberations, why don't we just start at number one as listed, talk about it and get our consensus and look our way down? So I think, well, one was flashing light, or flashing signs, I believe.
Mr. Chair. As pedestrian, I walk a lot, and I want to make sure when I'm crossing a busy intersection, like the one near the Lincoln City Outlets, that I'm safe when I'm in the cross lane. And, um, I think it's very clear from the evidence and some of the, uh, public, um, testimony that we received in the mail, they're putting a sign that changes every minute, and this is not gonna occur just in that spot, it's gonna occur in many other areas of Lincoln City, constitutes a safety hazard, so I would not support it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I've, actually, driving in bigger cities where, uh, flashing signs are allowed to change quite a bit, it is, is, it is definitely distracting, and I believe in, um, the summertime, summer, summer tourists down here, um, they're looking enough at different buildings to begin with, and I don't think there should be another distraction. I think as a safety reason, I'd, I'd be against this.
I, I, will you go ahead? I wonder how long it takes you to pass businesses on Highway 101, driving 35 miles an hour? Do you see them for longer than one minute? When you drive by, is it 10 seconds? Is it 20 seconds? A minute should be, you should be past it by then. So as the distraction, as some alternating casino-like, multiple-second thing, I don't believe it would be true. Yes, I see that there could be, you know, the clock would be nice and things like that would be nice, and that's fine. Or at, let's say, at the mall where that light may be the longer of the lights that we have, okay, that's whatever advertisements that they wanna put in between or half the screen would be fine. I don't believe that, first of all, not every business has them. Yes, I, I'm sure the cost is going down, but that doesn't mean that, oh, we can have flashing lights, let's spend five grand on a sign. I don't believe that's gonna be immediate for every business. They would've had them if they were gonna have LED lights already, I believe. So the 10 businesses, you have to think of how long it takes you to pass them, what would it be at night or during the day or whatever, so it's, I, I don't see that it's a distraction. I worked for the casino for a very long time, I worked there and saw millions of lights flash. It's very different than a, as you're passing down 101 for one minute as an advertisement. I think it's totally different, and I would be in support of the one-minute change.
And I have, um, a couple ideas. Um, first of all, if it was a one-minute rotation only, that would be okay, but, um, I also would be in support of a very small amount, like the 10% for, um, the time, a clock, but you said we can't do that, that, um, wouldn't be legal and appropriate, which, um-
You can't say what you can do.
You can't say-
You can say half of it can be applicable to it, or 10%.
I, I believe that actually the memo says you couldn't say, except the clocks are exempted, because that would be commenting on the content, but you could say the 10% of the sign may change every minute, the rest of it must change every hour. So I, I think that's what the note at the end was saying.
Okay, um, I, there are, um, a number of accidents, and I'm, um, agree with Commissioner Steve that pedestrians would be at risk, um, if there were the false signs flashing once a minute. There are so many distractions, um, even if you are only trying to find a parking place. I just, um, I just think that it would be too much. And the other, um, thought I had about this was that if in fact, um, we do allow this, if it were 10% of the sign only, not vertical, um, you know, those vertical slice, um, pictures that move, that's incredibly distracting, or the moving videos, um, I wouldn't agree with that. A scrolling text is too much, I think, for, for Lincoln City, for, um, all the tourists that we have. Um, and the other idea I had was that if we do do something, find some, some way that this can happen if it wants to, is on freestanding signs only. I think it's just, it would be just too much if they were allowed on every building. And I still go back to my favorite of just the time, and that's enough for people, for one-minute intervals.
Any other comments?
If, if we're going that way, to allow the percentage of the sign, so that if, if in fact, what they're asking to do is change the time, they can change the time, but not make the sign available for them to say, "I'm gonna change the time, but I'm going to go ahead and do a whole bunch more, too." So, how do you go about a percentage of a, I mean, 25% of the sign can contain a clock or a device that changes every minute? I don't know more than that.
You, you can put some language in, in the order, if that's the way you wanna go, or it can be, it has to, it can only change no more than once an hour, except that, you know, up to 10% or 10 square feet, whichever is less, or something like that, is, can pr- can change once a minute.
Am I mistaken, or currently are signs only allowed on building fronts, that the building is in fact the owner of the sign? In other words, you're advertising-
You're allowed freestanding signs, you're allowed, uh, signs on the building, on, on the front, on the side, on the back, or whatever.
So the freestanding would be the ones that would become the big distraction, obviously, potentially.
We have a limit on signs, or sign height, or width, or LED, can it be 60 feet? I mean-
The biggest sign you can have in Lincoln City is 100 square feet. For a freestanding sign, it's a function of the, uh, amount of, uh, street footage you have, of the, of the lot, of a sign on the building, um, the, the square footage you're allowed is a function of how much of the facade, the length of the facade of the building that is open to the public. So if you have a, a 50-foot wide store with a, you know, with a door that's open to the public in it, then you could have up to 50 square feet of signage. And what's not included in that is anything behind the window. So you could have additional, and if people do it, have additional signage behind the window, you see it, but like, Safeway's a good example of that. They were, when they remodeled it, um, I was saying about 2002, um, they were very concerned that they couldn't put up the signage that they usually do, because they usually do a couple hundred square feet, and they got around that by instead of having an enclosed gable, they had windows in the gable with, uh, signage behind it.
Does this apply to neon lights? Let's say that says "open," and the O flashes, the P flashes, the E flashes.
Those aren't supposed to flash, uh, we, when we find them, we just usually send a letter or make a phone call.
That's too distracting.
Right.
Well, I mean, if we, if we talked about that much space being allowed to change every minute, how many folks would support that idea?
10%, you mean?
No, no, it's a better than a metric, is.
If you have a three-foot, a three-foot by five-foot sign, and you say 10%, is it six inches by 12 inches? That's what I, is that true? I don't know. So you're talking about an awfully small space?
This is a recommendation that we would make to the city council.
Well, that's what I'm saying. What is 10%?
Depends on the sign.
Right. How big is the biggest sign? The cultural center? The one at the mall?
Ten by 10.
Well, so, 10% of that is one foot by one foot.
Big enough for a clock.
Have a big enough sign.
My recommendation is we just not recommend it.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
So the, the motion is, uh, recommend the city council of-
That we do not-
No changes.
No changes.
I'll second that.
No motion in a second. How do you feel?
I'm not gonna vote for it.
Oh.
I would, I think that it would benefit the city to have something that changes every minute.
All right, so the motion, you vote no.
Right. I will.
The motion is to recommend we do not allow-
No change.
You know, I kinda, I kinda like the clock idea, but, um, I would vote no.
Why don't you let Kate, uh, call the roll, Eric?
Yeah. No, I'm just kidding, I was just going for a straw.
Does she want more discussion?
Gary?
I guess my question is, who brought the desire to change this? Was it generated out of our own planning department, or was it-
I said, there were, there were a couple, there were a couple of people who came and testified to the city council about it, and, uh, the, the council, as I recall, the council suggested we look at it.
I, I assume those people were business owners that wanted to put signs up.
Yes.
I'm usually for helping businessmen out, but I don't know at this cost that I wanna help businessmen out. So I, I would probably go with the lay-sayers.
So, we have, we have a motion in a second. Kate, would you call the roll, please?
Hinton?
No.
Hoakland? Griffiths?
I vote no change, so yes.
Oh, pardon me, can we start over? Can I change my vote?
Yeah, please restate the motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, it's okay, I heard it backwards.
Recommending to the city council, there be no change in the lighting ordinance.
So, a yes vote is for no change. Start over again, please.
Okay, all right. Hinton?
Sorry. Yes.
Hoakland?
No.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
And Robinson?
No.
And the motion carries.
Right, I'm gonna ask again, is there, uh, any person who would like to speak on the second item, uh, which is LCM-
I think you've done that, you've closed the hearing.
Well, we've closed the hearing, that's right, I'm sorry, we're not going item at this time.
You're only, you're, you're discussion on item two.
Thank you, we're into discussion on item two. Item two, uh, amends, uh, 1788020 to allow the planning director to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance comprehensive plan, zoning and plan maps. Deanna?
Now, wait a minute. Um, from where I sit, I don't really see a need for this, and like I've said in the past, um, this is no reflection on the planning, um, department and director. I just think that there's a process in place that's been working, and I would further ask that all land use type of initiations start at the planning commission for initiation.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Um, this is just an initiation for just more, one more entity, it's not changing anything, really. Everything will still come to us, but it gets down to where I think you're more concerned is the administration, administrative adjustments, is where I think you're talking about more of the problem. But just initiating something to come to the planning commission, I think it'd sort of be nice to have one that, one extra thing that maybe the planning development department sees that feels it needs to come for a public hearing.
Well, actually, I know the difference between the two, and, um, and I just believe that, you know, that's the planning commission part of our job, so, you know, I don't see the need for it. And I haven't heard that there's a great need for it either, so I stick with my thought.
Sir.
My understanding is initiated by four possibilities as it stands right now.
That's right.
The citizen, the planning commission-
City council.
City council.
Property owner.
Or the property owner. So all we're doing in fact is- Or the property owner. So, all we're doing, in fact, is adding you as an initiator for administrative correction.
Not me, the planning director.
Whoever the planning director is at the time, or probably for administrative corrections, I would assume, maybe.
It could be for anything.
We have the four already, and you're one of them, as it stands, if you're a city's resident. But if you want...
I'm not, I'm not being an application.
I see no reason not to go ahead and fix what's really an administrative issue, so I...
Why doesn't the city manager also belong on this list somewhere?
He could, it could be, but he can also tell me to investigate something.
That's true. I, I, I think the staff has probably got the best notion of anybody in the city of what probably needs to be proposed. And I think it's a little bit high bar to ask the staff to pony up 150 bucks anytime they have a good idea. So, I'd be in support of this amendment.
The 150 bucks is the application for a, an appeal. For a text amendment, what is it, 1,500?
1,500.
So, 10, 10 times as much as what you're thinking.
Be a high bar. And again, I don't know of anybody who knows more about what ought to be proposed than staff. So, I'm in favor of this one.
I am, too.
I make a motion to revise the amendment to allow the planning director to propose amendments.
I'll second.
Kate, would you call the roll, please?
Hoagland?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Now, we're going to discuss LCMC 1752-160, which allows the planning director to grant minor adjustments to required yard setbacks.
I'm concerned, Mr. Chairman, about the impact this would have on neighbors who did a properly, whether it just may be made. It puts the onus on them to appeal that decision. And I think the onus should be on the developer, or whoever it was that cared. And it's best for them to come to the planning commission. So, I don't see any of this.
Mr. Chair? If I may ask, if the planning director is allowed to make this, the adjustment to the setback, who gets, where's the check and balance? So, if he, if the planning director just says, "Okay, this is the case," is it, is it then brought before us, or is it just done on the job, or at the building, and then it's, "Okay, the, that's good?"
The way the proposal is written, the, the person who wants the adjustment makes an application, then the planning director makes a decision on that. And as it's a discretionary decision, then, as Mr. Appicello said, then notice goes out to people within 250 feet of the affected property of what the decision is. And there's, there's an appeal time. And once the appeal period runs, if no appeal is filed, then the person can do what they want to do. If the appeal is filed, then it would come here.
And then what's the process right now?
Right now, really, the, the only safety valve is the variance procedure, which is notice in a hearing at the, here at the planning commission.
Could it be that in addition to the 250 feet, it'd be brought before the planning commission?
I believe the text, the text that's proposed says that, right now, the director can make the decision, or the director can refer the decision to the planning commission. One other thing is that there was testimony earlier about there was $150 appeal fee. Actually, the state law says if, if the appeal would be the first appeal that would have a hearing, then there's a state law that says we can't charge more than $250. So, we're within what the state law says is an acceptable appeal fee amount. Again, not to exceed 250, and we're at 150.
Mr. Chair? If, at present, the way it stands, a person has built outside the zoning code, and they want to get it changed, it has to go to us, right?
Right.
And do they have to pay for that cost?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if it changes, were you making a, a decision that says, "Okay, we'll go with the three inches"? Now, does that put the burden on the neighbor, now the financial burden on the neighbor, if they're trying to appeal your decision?
There would be an application fee for the adjustment, for, so for the, the person who wants the adjustment would have to pay an application fee. It hasn't been set, so I can't tell you what it would be. But then if, you know, let's say the, the planning director grants the adjustment, notice goes out, the neighbor wants to appeal, then yes, they have to pay the, the appeal fee, which is, it says $150.
So, then the burden of getting that person into zoning code falls onto the other person now. I, I have a problem with that.
I, I just want to point out, the burden of proof remains on the applicant. So, the applicant, the person seeking the administrative adjustments, I, I need a relief, five inches or whatever, they have the burden of proof if you have a de novo hearing before this body. So, they have to get up and show that they meet the standards. Just like when they come in for a variance, they have to show they meet the standards. They have to come in and show they meet the standards in, in an, in an appeal of an administrative adjustment. So, what, if you're, if you're referring to the burden, it would be, yeah, there's a $150 application fee to get, or appeal fee to get a hearing. So...
Whereas, if it comes to the planning commission in the first place, it doesn't cost them anything.
It doesn't cost a neighbor anything to testify.
Testify.
Okay. I have a few things, but one, the first one is, in how many situations have you found yourself that you would have liked to have been able to use this, had it been in place, let's say, in the last year, two years, five years?
Within the last year, I'd say one. Within, actually, I can think of, or two, I'd say within the, I've been here 16 years, and I can think of maybe three or four times when I've wanted to be able to say, "That's okay."
Do you recall the, the adjustment length or height? Yeah.
I remember one was a manufactured home that, it was a secondhand manufactured home, being moved onto a lot, and it was four inches too wide. So, that was one that actually applied for a variance, and came here, they got the variance. There's one where I think it's, oh, there's about a six-inch problem on setback, and then there was a close-to-a-foot problem on setback. Those are the two most recent. And there's another one, there's probably in the same range on, on setback.
Then, the second part of that question is, there doesn't seem to me to be a great need to do this. And because it puts the burden on the neighbor, either in losing something, I mean, they're going to be encroached on two inches, six inches, up to a foot, or if they want to appeal, it would be a financial and emotional burden on them. So, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm still trying to find the need in this. I, I can't see it, really.
One thing I would say is that if a mistake is, if somebody's made a mistake, and so they're short four inches, it's really hard to justify under our criteria for a variance that this is a hardship that is not of somebody's own making. So, so we have a situation where it's really not something that, that I normally would support a variance for. Yet, you have this problem, a small problem, that is going to require what, you know, moving the building over, or, you know. So, but I'm not saying whether it should come to the planning commission or, or to Richard for that decision. But I'm just saying there are some times when a variance isn't really a good way to address a problem.
And I, I would add that it's, it's always the difficult, even for courts, to tell people to tear it down. So, when you have something, and I agree with staff, that when someone has, because of a mistake or omission, essentially created the problem, they built a deck, and the deck encroaches into the side yard, we can tell them to tear it down. That's, that's one, you know, solution. And it's just hard to go in and say, "Well, it's encroaching five inches. Tear it, tear it down." So, that's, that's been the issue. It's, it's not, it's not that when people violate the code, they should be excused. It's when there's just a small issue, and everyone kind of agrees it's small, that's, that's the issue. Mr. Chair?
Sure.
This is for just side yard setbacks only, correct?
It's for setbacks, any setback. So, front, side, rear.
Around the house. Maybe something, instead of 12 inches or whatever, just knock it down to six inches. Or in, in 7%. Yeah. Yeah.
So, this is not something that would properly be brought to the planning commission? Is that kind of the sense of what you were saying, Deborah?
Well, as a variance. It could be brought as an adminis, or as an adjustment, something other than a variance. But right now, the only recourse we have is the variance. And if you look at the criteria for a variance, it's a hardship, it's a, something that is not of your own making. It's, it's a situation that exists on the property that, that makes it unusual in the neighborhood, and, and deprives you of your property right that, that other people enjoy. So, you know, when you look at those criteria, and you have to respond to that, when somebody has just screwed up, and, you know, put the thing on a little askew, and now it's hanging over, it, you know, it's not the same. It's not the same thing. On the other hand, I mean, you know, it's, I guess the one disadvantage here is that if people get used to the idea that they're going to be forgiven for six inches or 12 inches, then, you know, I don't, I don't know what to do about that.
Well, that just becomes discretion of the planning director. Right. I mean, the first one's a no, it's the second one is like, "Okay, now you're doing it on purpose." Maybe. If it's a particular building. Right.
Who knows?
I would be in for six inches and 7%.
I, I'm still, it isn't the person who made the mistake, and how, and maybe we should look at alternative ways to help with that. But it, but it's the neighbor that is actually paying the price of the mistake. And I can't, I can't support this.
Well, it's the neighbor that's paying. We're talking about all the neighbors, the 250-foot notice area. Only one or two of the neighbors are actually...
The next-door neighbor who is actually affected.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
There might be another solution. Maybe perhaps we need a new ordinance to deal with minor adjustments like this. So, theirs, they would fall under a rubric that's not a variance, but is appropriate to the particular issue or condition.
So, that's what this is. But the question is...
You're saying it should come to the planning commission?
Yes.
That sounds like it's adding a whole, Richard, that sounds like it's adding a whole new role to the planning commissions.
It's just that, you know, it's, it's, minor adjustments, usually, we'd have minor process. And, and the minor process is the director's decision. There's probably nothing wrong with having two matters come to you, the variance, which is for larger problems, and the minor adjustment, which is for smaller. But it adds, you know, you conduct hearings. Do, you know, you need a full-blown quasi-judicial hearing for every minor adjustment. And there's still a provision for a hearing. It might be easier to say there will be no appeal fee than to require you to have a hearing for every minor adjustment. Again, we're, we can go to a maximum of 250 for an appeal fee and stay within the boundaries of the, the Oregon statutes about that initial hearing. But there's nothing that says you have to charge. I mean, technically, we try, try to charge the actual cost. And normally, two, even 250 is not sufficient to cover the actual cost. So, we generally subsidize land use hearings anyway. So, if you have a number of options, you could say, "These come to you in the first instance." That puts the burden on the applicant. Of course, there's provision in the ordinance now, as drafted, that would allow the planning director to say, "You know what? This is for 11 and a half inches. I'm going to send that to the planning commission." Then you would have a hearing in the first instance. You could have no appeal fee, and have the director make the majority of these decisions. And then, if there's no appeal fee, then the neighbors wouldn't be, except to come here and present their testimony, they wouldn't be put out.
But what if there was something like before anything? I mean, something maybe a little less formal, where the person who made the mistake, the builder made the mistake, and then the builder has to first work with the affected neighbor, and whatever settlement they reach would inform the outcome. Because right now, I could, oh, whoops, make a mistake and talk my way, if I was a good speaker, I could talk my way into getting it approved. Oh, whoops. And the neighbor would have, would have nothing to say about it unless they ponied up whatever amount of money, 150, 250, whatever it is, plus goes through all of the, the heartache of trying to fight something that, you know, all they did was live there, or own property there. So, I still think there's something missing in all of this for the affected neighbor.
I, I like what Richard, though, said, though. If, if we just negate the fee for the appeal, then we can have Richard be able, or the planning director be able to, to say, "Okay, we'll, we'll allow this to slide." But if that neighbor has a problem with it, they can appeal for no price. It comes before us, which it would have come before us anyways. So, now it comes before us, and it doesn't cost a neighbor who doesn't like the decision. So, if, if we could build this to where it doesn't, there is no impact fee for that person that's appealing your decision, I, you know, Richard Appicello said, I'd like that to be, I can live with that.
I, I wonder, though, if we were reducing or eliminating fees, if we aren't encouraging an avalanche of appeals in this circumstance.
It's only appeals to his decisions, though.
Richard just said that it only happened like twice a year.
Actually, I wanted to hear Richard's...
I mean, the statute says we, we should charge appeal fees that cover our costs. As I said, we, $250, even if we, the appeal fee was 250, doesn't cover the cost of having a quasi-judicial hearing before you. So, well, we're never going to recover our costs. If you're concerned about disadvantaging neighbors, and you want to keep, that's a policy reason to, to set a low fee. The council wants to do that, they could do that. But, but generally, remember, the appeals to you in a quasi-judicial setting, and the original decision that Richard makes, they're discretionary land use decisions. There are standards here. It's not adversely affecting the, you know, the, they can't just come in and say, "I don't like this." They have to say, "This is contrary to the purposes of the zone." How exactly, make your case. How exactly is granting a four-inch variance contrary to the purposes of the zone? Well, they might not be able to make that argument. How, how is it, how is it really disrupting the purposes of the zone? Most people wouldn't be able to ascertain, again, maybe what you think is minor is 12 inches or six inches. We could have disagreement about that. So, you don't just come in just to gripe about it. You have to come in and address the criterion for the decision. It is minor. It is not going to adversely affect the purposes of the zone. And that's, that's where we are, is we're just trying to say sometimes that the mistake... And that's where we are, is we're just trying to say sometimes that the mistake, and sometimes it's, you know, hey, you hired the cheapest contractor out there and they didn't do a survey, and so you're the owner and you may go, well, I didn't do it, it was the cheapo contractor. Well, you know what, you hired him. So we may have that situation where we're looking at these bad facts and we all want to say, eh, you know, sorry, tear it down. But this is just a little bit of a relief valve, and that's all it's intended as.
I don't know if there's a way to word this, maybe Richard, or Richard has an idea, but maybe you could add a criteria that there's no way to remedy the situation, you know, like for instance, buying five inches from the neighboring property owner, or when I lived in Moorhead, people were putting twin homes, two side-by-side units, and they would tend to leave only the absolute minimum required side yard of five feet. Well, two of the developers didn't get along, so one developer would be out there every night after work with his tape measure to make sure that, you know, and so we got a lot of these. And we had various times, we'd have a property line adjustment that would allow for them to rectify the problem, or in one case, they had to trim off a few inches off the driveway. You know, I mean, so there were other ways to adjust, and this would be last resort, I assume. I don't know how we can word that.
You're suggesting, you know, other alternatives haven't been explored and are impractical or some standard like that?
No reasonable alternative.
Yeah. As an additional criterion for the decision. So people wouldn't be able to rush in without first exploring other options.
I'm kind of leaning in favor of letting this thing pass. I mean, one of the, what we are is the planning commission. We're not sort of the less dick-around-with-six-inch-mistakes-that-some-contractor-made commission. I'd actually like to see us get more into planning what Lincoln City is going to do and let the staff deal with this little stuff.
I'm going to just go and make a motion.
Could your motion include six inches instead of 12 for a maximum?
I'm thinking, yeah, I'll make my motion. I'll make a motion to recommend to approve administrative adjustments to six inches and seven percent with no, what am I trying to say? No fee, no... Yeah, no appeal fees.
Second.
Richard, you misunderstood the motion.
I understood the motion. It was, we take it from, the draft language is a foot or 15 percent, whichever is less is the maximum amount of adjustment there could be, and he's proposing that it be reduced to a maximum of six inches.
Seven and a half percent.
There's seven and a half percent.
And that if somebody wants to appeal the decision, there's no appeal fee.
With all the reasonable alternatives that have been used. Exhausted?
Sure, yes.
Is that right? I think Steve's...
How do we work out a deal where I can agree to the amendment without agreeing to the change in the limit?
You just have to vote no.
You just have to vote no. The way, I mean, you could say, let's have a vote on whether or not to reduce it, and then step through each one of the things that, you know, you got the reduction by half, basically, you got the no appeal fee, and then you got the reasonable alternative, those are three different issues. I'm taking it that the motion maker and the person making the second all agree that all three of those things are included in this motion.
Correct.
So that's what the motion is. If, in fact, you wanted to first break it out, you would have to withdraw your motion and then somebody make a motion to, what's, where do you stand on cutting it in half? And then, you know, step through those three. That's the only way I think you can...
All right, I'll withdraw my motion. Second.
All right. Let's take them one piece at a time. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve reduction to six inches and seven and a half percent.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Want to do a roll call?
I don't like splitting the baby.
Why is it split? I mean, I don't know why it has to be split. What don't you like about the first motion? The no appeal fee? Why are we doing it again? It's the same thing.
Oh, no, I, we haven't gotten to that. Right now, we're just looking at the one recommendation.
We're just splitting...
Six versus a foot. Six inches versus a foot.
I think we're just getting a more precise recommendation if we do it this way.
We have a motion to change the wording of the recommendation of the amended amendment of six inches from a foot.
Thank you.
Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Griffiths?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Cunningham?
No.
Hinton?
Yes.
Oakland?
Yes.
And Robinson?
No.
The motion carries?
Do we have a motion on the appeal fee?
I'll make a motion to be, there will be no appeal fee.
Second?
Second.
I've done a couple more.
Oh, so I understand now.
Can I just ask a question for clarification? The no appeal fee, would that apply to the applicant for the, so just for someone in the notice area?
Correct. If somebody in the notice area wants to appeal it, then there'd be no appeal fee. It's just basically the same thing, it just basically came to us to begin with.
I think more specifically, it's an appeal to a yes decision by the planning director.
I think appeal any of them.
Could it be within the 250-foot limit and not somebody who hears about something, some adjustment?
Should be affected area.
Could it be within the 250 feet affected area?
Maybe...
Not just someone down the road?
Somebody up the hill, somebody up the hill.
Up the hill, it's losing view. So we're not varying height, we're only allowing variance on the setbacks number.
But the setback, the setback sometimes...
What if your gap was right there?
From the height.
Could we make it within the affected area or no?
The notice, right?
Notice area.
Isn't that what?
Nothing simple was...
Is that implied?
I think it's implied.
It is implied, yeah.
We just spell it out.
That's what I mean.
Isn't that right, Richard? Anybody can, it doesn't have to be notice area.
Well, the people that receive notice are only going to be the people within the notice area, so, I mean, you'd have to argue, I'm an affected party, but I'm not within the notice area. So the notice area kind of says, yeah, you're clearly an affected party because you received notice, but that wouldn't preclude someone from arguing I'm an affected party, so.
And we also send notices to neighborhood associations.
And remember, we haven't written this language yet, so this is just, you're kind of fleshing out, well, actually, you only mean for the people in the notice area, it's up to you. We'll just pass along your recommendation.
Could you restate the motion, please?
Well, let's see, I just make a motion to recommend there'll be no appeal fee for any affected party.
That's pretty high.
Why not?
Well, that includes the party that's asking for the variance in the first place.
Bill himself, he can't?
No, he gets a no vote, he gets a no from Richard, then he has a free appeal from the planning commission.
May I make a friendly amendment?
Sure.
How about no appeal fee in the notice area? I mean, that's kind of implied, I hear, but, I mean, that's kind of what we've been talking about.
The applicant's going to, you know, get notice as well.
Sure.
No.
Sure.
So we are going to grant a no vote, one free appeal by saying, by that wording?
Yep.
Even the applicant.
If they get a no, we'll get one free appeal.
And it's not necessarily a bad thing to give everybody equal treatment.
If you're going to go with the builder without the homeowner, it's only fair.
Something's here.
You could have a property owner who, you know, hired a contractor, turned out not to be a very careful contractor, who's asking for relief from Richard, and you're going to make them pay an appeal fee, but not the neighbor that wants to...
I'm going to stick with my motion.
We have a second to that motion.
Second.
Could you repeat your motion again, please?
Yeah. Make a motion to recommend there'll be no appeal fee for anybody to appeal the decision of the planning director's administrative adjustment.
You said within the notice area.
No, anybody.
Anybody.
Well, and which Richard explained, they do have to justify their...
Any affected party.
In us. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Steve? Or Steve? All right.
Yes.
Hinton?
No.
Oakland?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries?
What was the third?
No reasonable alternative. No reasonable alternative. What was it, two?
No reasonable alternative?
Right.
Oh, I thought that was in the original wording.
No. I'd like to make a motion that the adjustment, the administrative adjustment, only comes after all other reasonable efforts to rectify the solution have been exhausted.
Second.
I'll second it. Cunningham?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Oakland?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Now we need a motion to send this to the city council.
We got a sidewalk still, one more.
Oh, there's four?
Yeah.
No, actually, I think what he's asking for is a motion to send the, with those three. Your recommendation, given those, includes those three. So you've kind of now agreed that your recommendation would have those three.
Did you talk about the dimension?
The what?
The dimension, 12 inches.
Yes, that was the first one.
Make a motion to recommend those three amendments to that, to city council?
The three components.
The three components of the amendment, thank you.
I second it.
So just to be clear, your motion is to move this forward with a recommendation, yes, from the planning commission, with the three amendments to the amendment?
Yes.
And a second. Kate?
All right. Hinton?
Yes.
Long?
Aye.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Oakland?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Yeah. If I may start this nice head-to-bay, fourth thing? I would like to, yes. Couple things, I, so it's the head-to-bay is what he's spoke about a lot, with the five feet and the 10 feet, and adjusting the sidewalk to be on the riverside versus not, and instead of be on the street side. If we're talking about the head-to-bay, going from the headland of there to the bay, why would it need to go up D River instead of across D River like a hangover pedestrian bridge or something like that? That would be separate than that. So they're going to come down and walk 70 feet upriver, back up, cross the bridge, walk 70 feet, come back up, then go back down. I don't see necessarily that.
Can I just respond to that quickly? There's no connection between, no, they're not, they're two different things. The river, along the river is one thing, the head-to-bay trail is another thing, it's just that they're both being put in the same ordinance.
Okay. So, so that makes a difference. I question the benefit of having a sidewalk of 10 feet on the riverside. Where would people park to enjoy this or go walk the, I don't know how many feet up D River and back down D River? I don't think that there should be a special exception for that area there, I guess. I think it should follow the rest of the city as far as having sidewalks. If you've ever been down there, it's not really, in my opinion, very easy to negotiate First Street or that other, where the statue is or something, there's a piece of art there. I don't know. I'm not for it. I don't see it.
Is there not a park on the north side of the river?
There's, on the north side of the river, as you're moving from east to west, there's the state park, which has the boardwalk through the wetland. Then there's a piece of property that the city owns that is open space, and then there's property, excuse me, Deb? You're not next.
Well, I was going to bring up the map that you had.
Okay. Just go up.
Oh, okay.
I distracted myself there.
Yes, you did.
The properties, you're speaking of the properties, the wetland, the state...
Okay, right, okay. So that, the arrow that's on there is the open space. Then to the west of that, with the red shade, that's owned by the urban renewal agency. It is undeveloped right now, but the council's looking at, or actually, the urban renewal agency is looking at at least partial development of that property, particularly the area along the highway.
East of that, that green block?
That.
That's a park, isn't that a state park?
That's a state park.
State park.
State park.
The light green is city open space, city-owned open space.
Because I've been down in that area, I seem to think I've been in that area.
Right.
Fifty table.
Yeah, if you go to the next slide, you can see, you can drive in...
On the motel?
Yeah, along the motel, and then as you go to the park area, that's further to the right, there, yeah, that, further, that is where you can drive to, and there's like a parking area there. And you can see the sort of zigzag line to the north, that's the boardwalk through the wetland there.
This is the campground. The state park? Yes, the state park campground.
Right.
So that is a place to park your car and enjoy the walkway along the river if you choose to. Walkway, we came out that far.
It could, it doesn't have to. Again, what, the way the draft ordinance is written, it's only for commercially zoned properties, so you go back up a slide, it's basically only the red ones.
So how would you get to that? How would you get to that river walkway?
On which side?
On either side. How would you get to that?
You'd get to it across that property, the affected property.
I would be open to having a nice boardwalk for this, the open space.
Yeah, well, I think...
For commercial development or...
I think the idea back is that at some point, there could be a boardwalk across the city-owned open space along the waterfront there and continuing over to the state park to connect to the state park walkway.
I guess what I'm getting at is if you put in a concrete walkway on the commercial piece, where do you get to it from? Instead of walking through Smalper or something?
Well, actually, there's, the bridge on the D River, the Highway 101 bridge has, I think, three arches, and the one on the north side actually is dry, and as I recall, anyway, the idea is...
where do you get to it from? Instead of walking through Smolberg or something?
Well, actually, there's, the bridge on the D River, the Highway 101 Bridge, has, I think, three arches, and the one on the north side actually is dry. And as I recall, anyway, the idea is that it would connect through there and you could actually get to the beach going that way. Underneath the bridge. And I'd say ultimately, the hope would be that there would be an additional pedestrian bridge to the, somewhere to the east of the Highway 101 Bridge.
I remember with the transportation, I think there was a transportation meeting that we went, and they were talking about like a hangover bridge, pedestrian bridge hangover, something like that at that, at that point. But I just don't see. I don't know.
I didn't understand what you're.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't recommend, I wouldn't recommend allowing an exception to the north and south sides of the commercially zoned property for a 10, five or 10-foot sidewalk there. I would support for the open space, but not for the commercial.
Chair, would you support the head-to-bay trail, though?
I, I like the head-to-bay trail. I think if we put like, like emergency respond call boxes on the trail or some kind of alternate, like lighting system in there, and the places that go off.
Well, I was meaning for like a homeowner has to build 10 feet of sidewalk, but he gets reimbursed for 5 feet of.
Well, I think 10 feet is quite large, quite large.
Well, I don't know, but like you say, if it's, this is more of a pathway for bicyclers, walkers, joggers, 10 feet is not a lot of room when you get multiple people passing.
Bigger than this.
It's not a lot of room.
It is a lot of room if it happens to be alongside the edge of your property and you have a 50-foot piece of property.
Yeah, and you get credit for that.
Huge amount of room.
I believe that's only for new construction, for residential?
Wouldn't, yes, right, new construction.
So buying a home and to build something, you know what to begin with, what you're gonna have to do.
In that circumstance, right, right.
So existing doesn't, they do not have to.
Right, I mean, but that's, we're talking about specifically D River, correct?
Two different things. D River, and I think Commissioner Long's moved on to the head-to-bay trail, which is different.
Do we have a percentage of the completion of the head-to-bay trail?
No, I don't. I think there's probably, there's probably around two miles of it that have been finished.
Out of the.
Maybe three miles have been finished, out of probably, what would amount to eight or nine miles.
And the average width of the trail as it stands?
The part south of Highway 101 on West Devils Lake Road, I think, is 10 feet. But I believe the part in the Village of Cascadehead is eight feet.
You can see on this map that the dark line shows what's already built? No.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, the dark line up in the far north, yes, that is built, but doesn't reflect what's built south of 101.
That's the road itself, correct, and the sidewalk?
Right.
This portion's built, and then this whole portion, all the way down to the, to this wetland right here, has been built. They had to skip the wetland, but they're coming back to finish that. They've got some grant money to do that. And then it wraps around on, I've lost my pointer. It wraps around on 22nd and comes up to the school. And then we also have a portion, there's a gap here, but there's a portion here along, on Port, by the Spring Lake Park.
Yeah. Are there?
Constructed.
Is there a way to add maybe secondary lighting in some of these lesser-lit areas or maybe provide emergency response call boxes?
Well, certainly could.
I mean, I just.
It's just a matter of expense and.
Right.
Yeah.
If we're talking about the building and the 10 feet and everything else, could that also be integrated into this trail?
Certainly move to add that as a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, you want to promote this thing as something as safe, and everybody's there, and every three-quarters of a mile, there's something that you know that you can be safe about. Right, like an emergency push the button, I mean, obviously, kids are gonna push the button and, oh, it's funny, but, I mean, when you need it, you're gonna want it. So.
Seems like a reasonable amendment to me.
Right. If the majority of, you know, we have a third of it done at 10 feet, you keep it at 10 feet. I understand that 10 feet's not, but if you're the homeowner with 50 feet.
Yeah. I really like this thing. I think that the head-to-bay trail on 10 feet, this could be a real significant thing for the city. We've got, we've got a lot of folks who come through the city on bicycles and hikers and so forth, who are choking up Highway 101. If this thing encourages a lot of movement along the trail, I'm all for it.
Mr. Chair.
As much room as we can.
Driving West Devils Lake Road there by the hospital, I mean, I've seen a lot of people use that. There's early morning walkers, bicyclists, kids. Eventually, as the knoll is developed and trails are put up there, there's gonna be a lot of people wanting to walk up there and use that one.
Right.
I think it's great to continue to put this on the trails.
What do they get credit for? They get credit for 5 feet? And what's the circumstances?
They're required to put in 5 feet now, we're looking, I'm talking about residential.
Right.
Required to put in 5 feet now. The ordinance would require them to put in 10 feet. They'd get credit for the extra 5 feet against their parks' system development charges. So they pay for the first 5 feet, right now, they're paying for that.
Already?
Already. The second 5 feet is, they would get a credit for that, for paying for that.
Could we ask, could we give them credit for more than 5 feet? I mean, to make it more appealing than that? I mean, is that something that we could recommend?
I don't think we can do that because they've got to, they've gotta pay their system development charge. And if the, if you're offsetting more than the actual cost of what they're doing, that's, they're sort of getting, getting a free ride in a way. I may be wrong about that, and if Richard can chime in on that.
I tend to think that we need to fund the parks and projects that are, and I think this is just a measured approach to that, to give credit for extra capacity. So I'm, I'm thinking it's kind of like double counting. Take, give them credit for the thing that they're required to do.
Well, where are you?
Uh, well.
Mr. Chair, if I could, maybe, based on the discussion, maybe it would be appropriate to break it up into two pieces, one for the head-to-bay and one for the river walk.
Uh, well.
Why don't we start with the head-to-bay trail?
Yeah, that's probably better.
So what, what, with the head-to-bay trail?
Well, I would like to make a recommendation to allow the 5-foot credit in addition, you know, to their 5 foot that they're required. And also look into the possibility of 911 emergency call boxes and secondary lighting along the, let's say, lesser-lit areas of the trail to enhance the safety of our head-to-bay walk.
Can I ask, are you suggesting that the owners, I mean, we're not designing a project here today, but this is about amending the code to make certain requirements of the property owner. Are you, are you suggesting that they be responsible for the cost of the call boxes? Or are you just basically separately saying, when the head-to-bay trail comes in, these other considerations should be?
That's where I was going. Should I make two separate?
I kind of think that there's an amendment before you, which just says, here's the text that we're, we need to do, donate, dedicate 5 feet, build 5 feet.
Will we see the head-to-bay trail?
Well, I'm.
I'm in commission. For recommendations?
I assume it's part of, you've seen parts of it already, but I, I don't know that it's wrong to make these recommendations relative to the head, the larger issue, but it's probably not precise to what's before either.
Could I comment on that? I missed part of the discussion of the safety issue. I would think people are probably more safe hiking along the head-to-bay trail than they are in some city streets here in Lincoln City. I don't see the need for the call boxes or additional lighting. I think that's, would add to infrastructure expense and disruption, particularly in open space areas.
As the amendment change, I would like to make a motion to allow the 5-foot credit to the required 5-foot head-to-bay construction? I don't know.
Are you making a motion to recommend to accept the amendment for the head-to-bay trail? That's correct. I'll second that.
Kate, would you call, roll, please?
Hinton? Yes. Long?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Oakland?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Then the second, the second part. I know you haven't.
Do we, I mean, we, we could talk about it, it's more, I'm not opposed to talking about it.
Well, I'm talking about the 5 feet on the D River.
Yeah.
You're opposed to that?
Right.
Do we have any other opinions? I'm relatively opposed to it, to, in the sense that it's isolated, and I don't see advantage of requiring some person to develop a 10-foot sidewalk along the river when there's no purpose for it at this point in time.
Listening to the arguments on this. My, my one concern would be the impact on the natural environment there and on the potential floods, I'm not sure.
Do we have an impact analysis on that?
We don't have one.
What do you think?
I'd like to hear more from, from the planning director about the need of this now for the D River. Or why.
The, the intent is that it'd basically be a pedestrian amenity, connecting the river with the beach, having something where you have, actually, as more intensive commercial development happens along the river, we have this walkway that is an amenity for the development as well. Again, as I said, ultimately, there's a plan that at some point, it's, both in time and space, that there'd be a pedestrian bridge across the D River. And so basically, you're creating a situation where there can be just a short, pleasant little loop.
So eventually, if we put something there that's to connect the beach, it would also connect eventually to the state park.
Right.
Plus, the hotels on the other side of the river will be able, when this bridge comes in, to walk across to get to the beach.
Right.
So right now, without that, how do they get to the beach from the state park? That'd be going under 101?
Sixth.
Usually what they do is they go up to Sixth and, you know, along the north side of the cultural center and then down.
We did have a fatality at Sixth, and it was a woman who was walking from the state park west across the highway.
So it would seem to create more opportunities for pedestrians than greater connectivity.
I'm thinking for the long-term vision, I actually probably, I can, I can picture that for the pedestrians from the state parks and the hotels and whatnot, to access the beach without walking on dangerous roads and crossing dangerous highways. So I'd be for it.
Okay, it's my turn. I think, I agree, I think it'd be good for safety for pedestrians and people visiting, they don't want to access the beach without trying to hop over the highway. I'm just, I'd just like to know a little bit more about what would be built there, rather than concrete, what are the other options that we have? And if we could be a little more sensitive to the area, then I'd probably be for it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you mentioned at the last meeting, it does not have to be concrete.
You know, the, what's drafted doesn't, doesn't say what it has to be made from, and actually, it could be, it could be specified if you wanted, that, you know, it could be, it could be a boardwalk, it could be a pervious, it could be, you know, whatever.
The amendment is for the commercially zoned space, correct? Not for the open space, not for the state park?
Right.
Right.
Don't affect those areas.
At all, that's, that's in the future, maybe.
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 If they're not connected.
No, no, it's for the commercial.
My question, if, if a developer was putting in something along that area, and like he wanted to put docks in there or something, I don't know that you could, but if he wanted to put docks in there, how would you go about doing that with a public right-of-way sidewalk against the river?
Same way they do it now, they get permission from state lands. And actually, that is a marine waterway zone there, which I have, all the years I've been here, I've never had an opportunity to, um, ever apply, because nobody's ever built anything in it. But.
Did I miss it?
Looked that one right there.
I'm not even sure if a, a dock isn't allowed use there or not, but I'm sure it might be. But everybody's looking, just for the benefits of people at home. People are looking at the photo on the wall behind us here to, to see what we see. And one thing I make, I want to remind everybody of is that we're talking about when commercial property is developed commercially. So if it's developed with single-family residences, like those three houses are, it would not apply to them.
And that is for new construction or renovations exceeding 50%?
Right.
Value of the building?
Right, yeah.
Only under, yeah, species of being commercial, not residential.
Right.
Do we have any more discussion? How about a motion?
I move that we approve it for the D River walkways.
Second?
I'll second.
Call, please, Kate.
Cunningham?
No.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Oakland?
No.
Hinton?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, do we need a motion to tie them both together?
I don't believe we have any recommendations on that one.
I think what he's saying is he broke that one down. Do you want to pass both recommendations?
The same goes.
Certainly.
Make a motion to recommend approving.
LCM 1752.230.
That's LCM 17.52.230.
Second. Call, please.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Cunningham?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Oakland?
No.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So those, the city council will hold a public hearing on these matters on Monday, March 28, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. All right. It is now seven fifty-two P M. The public hearing for file Z O A two thousand sixteen dash O two is now open. This public hearing concerns a city initiated proposal to amend the Lincoln City zoning ordinance. These proposed amendments will amend various sections of the zoning ordinance to specify locational operational standards for retail marijuana stores. This includes both recreational, recreational and medical stores. The planning commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. City council may adopt the planning commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action. The commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare an ex parte contact or conflict of interest in this matter? The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provision of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I'd like to summarize the public hearing procedures. Do we really have to read all this stuff for each one of these?
Yeah, I'm afraid you do, and I, sometimes we, if we had talked about it beforehand, I think we could have maybe done something at the beginning and opened all the hearings at the same time and worked it out, but I'm sorry, I think you do.
Can we open the next two hearings? Okay. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance of the council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any planning commission questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This relates to marijuana sales in the city. Right now, the state, by state law, medical marijuana dispensaries are required to be a thousand feet from schools and a thousand feet from each other. Under the initiative that was passed, recreational marijuana stores are required to be a thousand feet from schools, but it doesn't say anything about whether they have to be any distance from each other, there's no provisions about that at all. This proposed amendment would extend the thousand feet from each other to, to recreational marijuana stores as well. And it does that by, by changing the existing ordinance provisions we have relating to medical marijuana dispensaries, making them apply to what we're calling retail marijuana stores, which are defined to include both dispensaries and recreational stores. And as, as with the current zoning for medical marijuana, they'd be allowed in commercial zones, general commercial, town village core within a hundred feet of the highway, Nell Scott Plan District and the Ocean Lake Plan District, but not in the recreation commercial zone. And in, in both Ocean Lake and Nell Scott, there are, each of those is divided into three subzones, and it'd be only within the subzone with, along the highway. And that's, again, that's, that's what's in place now, is just making, just including retail, or, you know, recreational marijuana under the exact same conditions we have now for dispensaries. The, um, some people are concerned with recreational marijuana, that there might be, actually create like a marijuana zone, you know, where everyone goes, is where all the stores are congested. Some people are, would be concerned about that, some people think it would be a good thing, this is where you go to get your marijuana, and the rest of the city doesn't have it. So it cuts both ways. Again, the, the state initiative had nothing to say about it, and, uh, just, just the distance from schools, but nothing about distance from each other. And there's no such requirement, like for liquor stores, they can, you know, they can be right next to each other or whatever. So this is just essentially on, on the table for your consideration. If you want to extend the, the thousand-foot spacing to recreational marijuana, or really not worry about that, just treat it like any other retail business.
Could you use the thousand? We're gonna wait?
I'm done.
Sure.
Does the commission have any questions for staff?
I have one.
Two.
I'm just trying to figure out, um, why is this an issue, just be, is it because people have talked with you or city council about?
Some people have talked to me, I, essentially, right now, people can't open up recreational marijuana stores, but once they can, it makes it the cat's out of the bag, it's now or never if you want to do it. So really, it's, it's why it's now. You may ask, what problem are we addressing? I'm not sure there's a problem, they're saying, if you want, if you think there's a problem and you want to address it, now's the time to do it.
Mr. Chair? Has it been decided yet if recreational will be able to sell with medical, or is it going to have to be sold separately in different stores?
Don't think it's been decided yet, has it, Kate, you've been following that?
Yeah, I think by the end of the year, if you have a medical, right now, the only places that are open are medical dispensaries, and then they have an early sales license from O L C C. And I think by the end of the year, they have to decide which one they want to do, but they can't do both. That's my understanding, so, Richard may know more.
Just that, that's my understanding, however, I, I understand that there's an effort to change that, to allow them to co-locate.
Because what I have heard is that e, even if they can't co-locate, they, they might be able to be in, maybe in, in the same building in different suites, but then if that, but then if the local government has a restriction of whatever distance apart, then that would, wouldn't allow it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, but what is essentially proposed here is to, is to subject the recreational to no more stringent regulation than what the medical marijuana we already adopted.
Right. No difference at all.
Basically just lumping and using, changing the word to retail, is that correct?
Essentially.
That, doesn't that serve the purpose of not allowing you to have a checkerboard five hundred feet apart, medical, recreational, medical, recreational? By changing the name to retail, you've basically taken that checkerboard ability out, because now every establishment has to be a thousand feet from the other one. So it actually maybe cuts down the density by five hundred, by a hundred percent.
I hadn't thought of it that way, but I guess it could have that effect, um, I'm not sure exactly what the state law says, um, as far as...
Apparently, it doesn't apply to, like, recreational.
Dispensaries.
Have to be a thousand.
From other dispensaries or where they're sent from any other place selling marijuana, I don't know. I suspect it just says other dispensaries. So, yeah, I guess it could have that effect. And I guess the bigger, in my mind, the bigger question is whether, not so much, do you want at the five hundred feet or a thousand feet from them or not, or do you want, you know, basically next to each other, or basically anywhere that they want to go, really is what it comes down to in, in the commercial zones.
Well, I, I think, if I remember correctly, we put a few restrictions on it, but the council basically ignored those, and so we're back to this, a kind of a stripped-down version. And since we are, I think this actually reduces the volume of them. By calling them retail, you now can't have a medical, then a recreational, five hundred feet from it, another medical, another recreational. So I think this actually reduces the volume by about fifty percent by calling them retail.
I guess it can have that effect, yeah.
Is this something maybe we should look at later, because we don't know what the outcome's going to be, if they have to be separate?
We have to be ahead of them.
Well, as I said, I think once, once later happens, um, you know, if you think there's a problem, it's, it's, it's locked in.
How dense, how, how much density do we want? Do we want sixty marijuana dispensaries regardless if it's medicinal or recreational? I think we should probably let the hearing public comments first before we deliver, you know? I mean, but that's the, essentially, that's the question.
Right.
Yeah, we're just, at this point, we're just trying to clarify in our heads what the proposal is.
I will say, like, in, in large cities, like in Denver, you know, there's, there are areas that where marijuana stores have tended to concentrate, there are, there are dispersed, but there are places where, you know, there are several within very close proximity. I don't know that we will ever have that issue, it's a small town, um, and it may well be, the market will take care of that issue.
We need.
I think we have two liquor stores now.
I mean, we have, there's like six dispensaries as it is.
Do we want to promote ourselves?
That's what I mean, what do you want to do? So that's what we have to really think about.
Well, that's in deliberation.
Yeah, right.
Why don't we get some, if there is, um, thank you, Richard. All right, I still have an empty sign-up sheet, so if there's any person in the audience who did not sign up and wishes to speak, please raise your hand. Any comment from representatives of public agencies? Is there a motion to close the public hearing in the record?
I make a motion to close the public hearing in the public record.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? All right, discussion of deliberations.
As we started it already, without it, uh, I liked the way the ordinance is written, only in the sense that it's somewhat restrictive in a checkerboarding way. And, and, you know, I guess we could decide that aren't the tourists, we want our families, but, you know, other people, and, and then we can promote it.
Why wouldn't families want to go there too? I mean...
Well, I don't know.
I mean, why, I mean, was it?
Well, okay, what, you do, you want your twelve-year-old out there hanging around with the...
You're going to come to the beach, and you're going to come to a place that has fifteen marijuana stores.
Sure.
So, is that what you want? Is that what you want to recommend?
Something you, you might chase away some of the people you have coming down. I don't know, just the, I, I don't know how we change this, I, I guess I'm at a loss to think that we have any effect, effectively, ability to change this, other than, you know, this, this ordinance has you written it now, like you said, takes the checkerboard possibility out of the way, which to me somewhat restricts. And then, like I said, market's going to make the, the difference, I mean, do people come here looking to buy it, or, you know, do they go to their heart? I don't know.
Buy it there.
They probably buy it at home in their hometown.
If their town has allowed the sales.
Well, you know why we don't have twenty-one new cars, uh, new car shops in Lincoln City?
They rot.
Why that? Because it's, they're not going to buy it? Exactly.
We don't, it doesn't support it, but...
Two.
Two?
Oh, I guess that was a quick answer.
Is there? It's because there's eight dispensaries. Is there?
Do we need three or four?
Is there a map where it shows the possibility of any, of the established marijuana retail sales? And the thousand feet around that, how many other places could actually be built if we included everything under the one banner of marijuana sales? How many possible places could there be?
We, we could come up with a map, a just, you know, just, uh, rough idea, seven miles long, so, uh, that's thirty-five thousand feet, so roughly, so it's thirty-five stores possibly.
That would be cool.
Well, they have to be able to make it from one side to the other.
But the schools, the schools, the schools will eliminate some of those areas, so...
Wouldn't have to worry about pedestrians anymore.
Maybe you get to half of that.
Probably.
And I'll, I'll just add that, uh, there is a prohibition on, on having more than a one-thousand-foot buffer between retail licenses, so...
So you can't do better than that.
You guys couldn't say, change, change it to, you know, two.
Couldn't we, uh, put a cap on how many could be in, in the city limits?
No, I think you can, I think, no, you can't even prohibit that would be, you know?
I, I think there's, there's some parameters the state set out, and although we have home rule, and we, we have authorization to have time, place, and manner restrictions, I think what's proposed is, just gives a parity with medical marijuana.
Hard to make a decision when you don't know what the outcome's going to be, if there has to be seven stores or not.
Could it be re, could this be brought up again?
The timing.
I think that they're allowed.
The reason it's, it's brought up now again, as I said, is that the time, if you want to do it, as a policyman, the time to act is now. We get, regularly get inquiries about where retail recreational marijuana is allowed, and we want to be able to answer clearly so people don't invest and then find out, whoops, um, that's not going to be allowed.
So, if I may, if, um, if it's more restricted now with this suggestion, then at a later time, it could be loosened up?
Could be loosened up later, that's true.
Is it easier to tighten the belt or let the belt out? Well, I don't know.
Let my belt out seems a lot easier.
I'm just asking for real, is it easier to be more restrictive now, or is it easier to be less restrictive now?
Depends on how many bags of potato chips you...
More is the answer, that was, Richard just said that, if you, if you impose, or if you don't impose anything and try to decide a tighter limit, later people will invest in.
Oh, I see, so it's easier to make more restrictive than that of that.
I would, can we make a motion?
You're ready.
I'm ready. I'm moved to recommend this ordinance to city council.
This proposed ordinance to city council. I'll second. I'll second.
I may ask, is it a thousand feet, is that where, I would, I would...
Right, it says a thousand feet.
Thousand feet and, and schools.
There's, there's nothing up there that says it, but yeah, it'd be a thousand feet.
Yeah, okay. From schools, any retail, just, okay.
Thousand feet from schools, a thousand feet from each other.
Right.
Which, I mean, if they're allowed to have both in the same place, then it'd be different then. Right, but right now, we're voting on it. Thank you.
Roll call, please, Kate.
Hinton? Yes. Long?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries?
City council will hold a public hearing on this matter on Monday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, at six P M. It's now eight eleven. The public hearing for file Z O A two thousand sixteen dash O three is now open. This public hearing concerns a city initiated proposal to amend the Lincoln City zoning ordinance. These proposed amendments will amend the R M multiple-family residential zone. Amendments include newer clarified standard for pedestrian, street network requirements, building massing and orientation, recreation areas, bicycle parking, and density calculation. The planning commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. City council may adopt, the planning commission's recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action. Commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any of the members... Does any of the member, does any member of the commission wish to declare an ex parte contact or conflict of interest in this matter? Substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I'd like to summarize the public hearing procedures which have been adopted by the city council. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any planning commission questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
Thank you. In two thousand fourteen, staff came with a proposed amendment to the seventeen-twenty residential multifamily ordinance to clarify calculation of density in high-density and low-density zones, and to tweak the recreation area requirements and remove the requirements for storage for RVs and campers and boats. So, at that time, staff promised to come back with additional multifamily amendments for design standards and for recreation area. And a commissioner asked that we also take a look at the amount of square footage we require per unit, especially in the low-density zone. So, that was two years ago, and in the meantime, we have approved eighty-four new apartments. And so, that experience and the processes also, you know, raised some additional thoughts about how we might change the ordinance to make it work better and to get the best result. Presently, we are very short of multifamily, as some of our members have told us through personal experience, and vacancy rates are very low. The city needs to encourage new development of multifamily apartments, and also, we need to make sure that residents' needs and tenants', neighborhoods', and community will embrace the new units, so that, so that everybody's comfortable with them and is willing to work together to have more, to fill our needs. So, just to start, I want to mention, clarify that, well, let's see, first thing, I think, is to talk about the purpose. This section is not going to be changed, this is what it says now, it's to provide an environment suitable for higher-density urban residential uses and community services. Right now, our requirements for square footage, just to put this in perspective, are five thousand square feet for single-family development in the R five zone, or if we have a single-family house in the R seven-point-five zone, then it's seventy-five hundred square feet per unit. For multifamily, we require that the first two units have eight thousand or four thousand apiece. So, you can see that we're reducing the number of square footage, which means the density can be higher. And then, for each additional unit, in the high-density, which is within a hundred and fifty feet of commercial use, we only require an additional one thousand two hundred fifty square feet. For the lower-density, which is beyond a hundred and fifty feet of commercial use, we require two thousand two hundred fifty. Well, it's twelve hundred and two thousand two hundred fifty. So, so it's considerably more dense, less square footage required. The higher density consumes less land, and it means we can build more units, and done well, the high-density can bring people together in close proximity to the jobs, the services, the shopping that they need and desire. If it's not done well, the higher density can lead to residential, resident dissatisfaction, alienation, irritation of the neighbors, the low, and possibly lower property values. So, the goal of these amendments is to ensure that multifamily living is attractive option for Lincoln City residents and neighborhoods. I did, since the last time we talked, put this in a form so you could see exactly what we're striking out and what we're adding. This is online, if somebody at home wants to check, because I don't hit every single thing. In my PowerPoint, this is just an example of a nice apartment complex in another city, possibly another state, I don't really remember where it came from, but it exhibits some of those qualities that we're trying to achieve. The uses in the R M zone remain the same, the permitted uses and the conditional uses, we're not messing with those at all. Minimum lot area and density remains the same, except now, we are offering bonuses as incentives to get maybe some nicer development or possibly affordable housing units that we wouldn't get otherwise. Bonuses, and if you're outside the tsunami zone, you're eligible. I put a maximum on there because we had various options for getting bonuses. This proposal is up to two hundred forty square feet in high-density zones, so instead of requiring twelve hundred square feet per unit, it would be down to nine hundred and sixty per unit if they got enough bonuses that they earned it. In the low-density zone, it's up to four hundred and fifty square feet, so it would go from two hundred, two thousand two hundred fifty square feet to eighteen hundred per unit. So, that might be enough to get some extra units, okay? And that's a good thing in terms of the developer being able to develop, and it's an incentive for development, and it's also, it's also beneficial for meeting our housing needs. Okay, so here's, here's what you do to get, to get bonuses. First of all, you can provide enhancements, private balconies, decks, and patios, and it gives one point five square feet for each one percent of the units. So, if you did a hundred percent of the units, then you would have a hundred and fifty square feet, that you could reduce that per-unit requirement. For each point-two percent of the total project cost spent on recreation space, equipment, and furnishings, you get thirty square feet. Right now, we require recreation space, and, but we don't say that it has to have any particular kinds of furnishings or equipments to make it usable, other than, you know, open grass, for instance. So, this is an incentive to try to get playground equipment, for instance, or maybe a basketball court, or grills, and so forth. I might say, on the first one too, the enhancements with the private balconies, decks, and patios, right now, we have been counting that as recreation space. So, if somebody provides a ten, let's see, ten by four, ten by six patio or balcony, we count that as sixty square feet of recreation space. But we're finding that people are saying, you know, we're not getting enough common recreation space for actual, to make it useful. And so, rather than including it, and some of our council members, I know at least one, says the way the ordinance was originally proposed, it was never intended that balconies and decks would count, it was supposed to be a common recreation space, either indoor or outdoor. So, you know, there's been some controversy about that, the way we've been interpreting it now, you know, is. So, rather than, than take away any incentive for providing balconies, I provided another incentive, because I think balconies are a really nice amenity for apartment dwellers. Okay, another way you can get bonuses is to provide improvements for the coast of climate, projects with climate-appropriate design, including weather protection, more window areas, skylights, windbreaks, that kind of thing. So, this is optional, but it's a way to get more density if the developer chooses to do it. Just another picture to break up the text and to show you some other nice qualities that we could achieve through bonuses. Another reason to give bonus is to try to increase the amount of affordable units on the market. And to do that, we are suggesting that you could increase the density of your project by ten percent, assuming that all those, if all those units are, meet an affordability standard, that the city still needs to formalize. All right, as far as setbacks, they all remain the same, except that in the front, which requires a twenty-foot setback, the amendment would allow a front porch to encroach in that twenty feet, up to five feet. So, it incentivizes front porches.
It's defined by the main street?
Front porch, front yard would be the main, yeah, the main, let's see, what do we call that? The frontage, yeah.
So, is that just five feet from the building, five feet from the property line?
Five, you could encroach, you have a required setback between the property line and the building, and this would allow an encroachment into that required twenty by up to five feet. So, you'd still have fifteen.
What about width? If you can go out, my question is, if you can go out five feet, can you go the full width of the building or the full width of the unit?
Yes.
That takes up a lot more.
That was my intent, yes. Okay.
Anything in there about, excuse me, anything in there about a roof over the porch?
Well, we do have, allow some encroachment for uncovered decks already, so this is, I'm not sure that I say covered porch in the, in the code, but if I don't, and we need to clarify that, I certainly can put that in there.
I was going to say, you put up, put up a roof and then put up some screen, maybe to keep the mosquitoes out and.
Uh-huh.
You know.
Okay. So, okay, well, we can work on that in discussion and make sure you're happy with it. Side and rear yard, we're just clarifying, because where we have a lot with multiple buildings on it, then what, where, how do we determine the, those yards? What do we measure from? And I'm suggesting that we measure from the nearest principal building. And because the side, and then I mentioned the height here, because side and rear yard depends on the height of the building in this zone. It's, it's a minimum of five feet plus one foot for every half foot, the building height is over fifteen. So, yeah, okay, so we have to know how tall the building is that we're, that we're calculating. Okay, here's just an example of a porch with a roof.
Two.
Yes. Now, parking, the parking requirement is two spaces per unit for cars, elderly apartments, it's one per bedroom plus one for, for any employee who happens to be working there. I am proposing that we can reduce it by ten percent if the apartment complex is within three hundred fifty feet or basically a block from a transit stop. And each ten percent bicycle parking spaces reduces the requirement by one space for a vehicle. Yes?
I still have my remaining question about, during our work session, I suggested that maybe if there's an underground under the building, under the unit parking space, that that would also could reduce the additional parking by one? Did you give that some thought?
We would count that towards the parking requirement if there was one under the, under the building, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't give an extra bonus or?
If it's, if it's underground, you'd like, you'd like to incentivize having parking underground, or?
Yeah, if it works, depending on.
Or covered parking of some sort.
No, under the building, because it doesn't take any more footprint.
Take any more land, okay. We can talk about in discussion how you might like to incentivize that. Okay, now, this is new, and this is something that we're not used to here in multifamily, but we are used to this in commercial. And that is that we don't have parking in the required yards, I believe that's, that's true now. But this also suggests that we wouldn't have parking between the principal building and the street, that the parking would be tucked behind the buildings, where it is exposed to the street, there would be landscape buffer, or from the alley, or from uses in other residential zones, that you have a minimum distance. These diagrams are small, I got them out of somebody else's code, but it's showing, it's unacceptable to have a parking lot in front and then have the building somewhere behind. It shows that you can have access to your parking from a drive from the street, you can access from the alley, or you can access from a side street. For parking on sites with more than one building, same thing basically applies, you can have a drive that takes you behind the buildings, you can have access from a rear parking lane off a side street, but you can't put your parking lot right in front of every, all the buildings. And this is an example from Fargo, North Dakota, where they've got parking in garages, but it's in the, between the street and the buildings, the principal buildings. Here is an example, and I assume that this is a back alleyway, and then you've got your tuck-under parking, that's not exactly underground, but that may be what you're getting at. Okay. Okay, recreation space, this has been kind of difficult to, we don't have maybe enough words in the ordinance about recreation space to make sure that what we're getting is usable and desirable. The requirement is two hundred and fifty square feet per unit, and this can be recreation space that's indoors, or it can be outside, and as I mentioned, we have been counting private decks and patios, which this ordinance proposes that we do not do anymore. What we do suggest for additional amendments here, or clarification, is that, that the playground, the recreation space is not within thirty feet of the garbage and recycling. It's within the view of the residences it serves, so that somebody can look out and see what's going on in the playground, essentially. And it also gives a nice visual break in maybe the hardscape, the parking, or whatever, that you have a, something pleasant to look at. This proposes that the minimum area be two hundred and fifty feet, square feet, I'm sorry, that should be square feet, and no dimension should be less than twenty, and our chair had an issue with that last time, but then he decided maybe it was okay, so we can talk about that later. And that the recreation area should have slopes no greater than one to twelve, one foot of rise over twelve foot of run. This is so that you don't, you don't end up having all your area on that slope part that you can't build on, or don't know what to do with. And so, recreation space can take many different forms. This is a very dense apartment complex, and, but it has a large, very attractive recreation space adjoining it, probably not what we're going to see a whole lot of here in Lincoln City. But I just want to mention that recreation space is not necessarily just a playground for kids, and it should be recreation space that is appropriate for the type of tenants that the developer intends to attract. Here's another example. And having it exposed to the front, I think, I'm all of a sudden on an automatic here, having it exposed to the street is, is an attraction. So, recreation space continuing on, indoor recreation space shall have transparency, in other words, windows, so that it's not just a dark closed room. Private balconies, decks, and patios do not count. Private balconies, decks and patios do not count. However, we do have an issue with, in mixed-use areas, we, the mixed-use areas say that, you know, that includes apartments over retail use. And those tend to refer back to the RM standards, in which case, you know, we may need to do something different with the recreation requirements if you're talking about in the Taft Village Corp., which is downtown and the buildings come right up to the street. And so I, I reduce the requirement in that case to 100 square feet per unit rather than the 250, and minimum of 36 square feet and, six feet. And the balconies do count in, in areas of mixed use. Okay, just so you know what I'm talking about, on the left side of this slide, I have just shown RM zoning. So that's where our RM zones are. On the right-hand side, this is our RM zones and all our various commercial-type zones that allow mixed use. So you see, there might be more opportunity there for more apartments above stores. And we haven't seen a lot of this, but we did just approve one development on 51st Street Southwest in the Taft area. And there will be one apartment up above. Okay, access barrier, the first thing I sent out looked like this had been changed, it wasn't changed, so you can just ignore that part unless you want to change it. Okay, site development standards, these are similar to some of our standards for commercial development, but the idea is to provide a pedestrian network connecting the building entrances to the streets, to each other, to transit schools, parks and commercial, which basically means to the public sidewalk, I hope, you know, there's a public sidewalk there or will be built as part of the development. That the surface needs to be ADA appropriate, that you raise to curb heights, so that is especially where you are adjacent to a drive or a street where, where you don't want cars jumping over that curb, it's just added protection. Marked crossings where pedestrians are supposed to cross, paths of vehicles, and stubs to future development that's adjacent where you might be able to make a connection as, as development occurs. This is an example of how it's not very, it doesn't seem very pedestrian-friendly, and by building, bringing the buildings closer to the street, you can make them more accessible. But it also demonstrates ADA compliance. Site development, street network on the site, if, if the site happens to be, and sometimes multifamily sites are larger in area, and so they may be between two street segments, and we want to make sure that we connect street segments where we can. So in the case that you have your multifamily site right in between two street segments that logically should continue through, this says that you, that the developer needs to work with the city to make sure that we can make those connections and also to provide stubs to future development. Building orientation, one building, at least one facade and one entrance facing the street. Now, these are new standards. We have some standards for site orientation and for building construction in the commercial zones that we have, but we don't have anything now for multifamily, so this is all new. Multifamily, any street-facing facade must have at least one entrance to the street. Interior building must have main entrance visible from private streets or parking, in other words, you can't go through the parking garage if there is one to get to your front door of your building. And I don't even know, maybe a, maybe the fire code or the building code wouldn't allow that anyway. Here's an example of something that could use a little more articulation and detail. And front door. Building articulation, all four sides, construction details, this is just nice little things that you can do that make the building look better, look like a higher-quality building. I don't think, I don't know, you know, we'll hear from some developers probably after this about how much this would cost, but it's just adding some trim, some, all four sides of the building should, should be the same. If, if you're changing materials though, you don't stop at the corner, as in the diagram on your right, you just wrap it around for a minimum of three feet, so it continues the, the appearance. Just some examples of houses that are well-articulated, or apartments, I should say. Elevations that are longer in dimension than 50 feet or larger than 800 square feet should have some projections or recess areas, some detail over the doors so that it breaks up that monotony. Building articulation, again, at least one exterior pedestrian door, front door, shall not be a patio-style sliding glass door. No facade, you know, this is like, like you would expect to find if a single-family house was developed in your neighborhood. No facade should be greater than 100 feet. Each story must have, and that's, you know, a standard that we can visit and, you know, about and talk about that, that length and whether that's necessary. But to be in character with this community, probably, you know, we're not looking for really, really long buildings, we tend to have smaller buildings here. Each story must have 15% windows. So we had some new, some, some of our new apartments have blank walls that face the street and no windows in them, and so this provides a minimal standard. In the commercial districts, for like retail where we want the long shopping windows, they're, you know, we're talking 40%, 60% windows in a facade, so this is fairly minimal. And as far as exterior stairways and corridors, they must have a roof over the, over them, you can't just slap up a stairway up the front of the building. And it could be tucked in to the interior of the building, or it could be projecting out with a roof over it. Other building specs, it's talking about trim, minimal trim, corner boards, you can see the, where these things are here, durable base of at least two feet above grade, we require this in the, in the commercial areas, just to give it a solid appearance, it's, it's aesthetics. It might be, there may be some functional usefulness for having a different material on the base anyway, but I'm not getting into that. Other site standards, mechanical equipment and utility meters should be screened from street view. Bicycle parking is required. And we've had some complaints about dog waste in, in relation to apartments that allow pets, and so I'm proposing, because I don't have a ready answer for every apartment unit, but when we, when we talked about having a dog grooming facility, which was, or no, kennel, a dog daycare. It was before the planning commission, and there was concern about the waste disposal, and so we ended up saying you have to have a plan, and that's approved by the planning director, and you have to comply, make sure you're in compliance with that plan. So, that's all I have. Do you have questions?
Would you leave that up, please, Deborah, and go back to the beginning of the bonuses?
Okay. Okay, there we are.
So, the bonuses for 0.2% of the cost of amenities, that was the slide I was finding.
So say you have a $3 million complex, or building, and so 0.2% would be $6,000. So for every $6,000 you spend in that case on recreation equipment, or, you know, on the next slide, we also have the same thing for weather protection, skylights, that kind of thing, you can reduce your square footage required per unit. So if you really, you're almost at, you know, you really want that 32nd unit, or those, you know, you got 30 and you really want 32. You can figure out ways that you can get some higher density and, you know, by providing some, you know, some amenities.
These, these two in particular, I mean, I, I kind of, I like the other ones, all of the other bonuses, but these two seem like they're fairly, some of them are fairly easy gain, easy to gain in the system, like buying cheaper footballs for the sports equipment.
I would expect that we would see invoices for materials or equipment, that kind of thing, purchases.
I, I like the, I like the more durable types.
Mm-hmm.
Equipment, but.
Like the private balconies, for example?
Oh, and the playground and, and.
Oh, it's recreational.
Significant appliances and things like, like barbecue installations.
Mm-hmm.
Serve the entire.
So you do like that?
I do like it, and there's just, there's just something about those two paragraphs that seem easily gained.
You don't like the calculation?
There's, there's something vague and weak about the, about the, like, weather, weather protection, wouldn't they already put weather protection as a part of our, as a part of our formats and standards?
Well, like in the commercial zones, we require awnings over sidewalks, for instance. We don't require anything like that in multifamily. We don't require anything over the mailboxes. What else? Windbreaks, for instance, might be nice along where your recreation area is, if you're really getting blasted by some of our high winds. I mean, they're subtle things.
I think what I was.
Improvements for coastal climate projects with climate appropriate design. Mm-hmm.
Give them a bonus for doing something that they should be doing anyhow, climate appropriate design.
Mm-hmm. Well, climate appropriate design, besides building out of durable materials, for instance, might be orienting the building to capture more solar. It might be, you know, sheltering that recreation area so it doesn't get blasted by the wind. I mean, it's, it might be harder.
I just think.
But it, what it does do, what all these do is allow a higher-density development, which may or may not be of interest to the planning commission. But in doing so, it also, also is asking for something in return.
I agree with the concept, I'm just concerned that you're opening yourself up to a lot of, a lot of.
Hassle.
I don't know, judgment calls.
Mm.
Putting yourself in a position to, well, this football isn't, you know, this is not a Spalding, so it doesn't quite meet a good quality playground equipment.
Well, I guess that's why I put value on it rather than, you know, my judgment about, about value, you know, it's, it's a, it's a dollar amount, it's a dollar amount.
This, this bothered me a little bit when you presented it in the work session. It still bugs me a little bit.
Maybe it's the fact that, you know, like, yeah, if, I, I'm not expecting that we'd give a bonus based on something that would go away like a football, you know, I mean, you know, it would be, and maybe we need to say durable improvements or something like that.
Who does this?
Okay.
Who does this get presented to, and who decides what qualifies the bonus?
Well, when we do commercial, for example, and we've had quite a bit of experience with that, we have a site development review, and we also have that for multifamily, it was just, we don't have very many standards for multifamily. So when, for instance, some goodwill comes in and said, you know, wants to build a store, and we go to our design criteria and, or when, when there's planned unit development, they come in and they want to get a bonus, you know, that, that's a bonus situation as opposed to, you know, trying to meet criteria. Either way, sometimes, you know, it's, things are spelled out fairly well in the code, but there's always some discretion, and especially with like the commercial design standards, it says right in one of the paragraphs, that if they find that they can't meet the standards exactly for a design element, maybe, you know, because of the type of building it is or the type of use, that they can show the, the planning director how they are meeting the intent of the ordinance through doing something else instead. So it's not a free pass, but it's, you know, so you, you do end up working with the applicant to some extent on what can you do, for instance, with goodwill, not to get too sidetracked here, but they, you know, we wanted them to build at the corner, and they said, no, we really want to be back in the back of a, and we said, we don't want just a parking lot at the corner of the highway and, and night, southwest, southeast night. So, they came to us and said, well, how about if we build another building there? And, well, okay, and how about if we, you know, show frontage improvements that tie the site together so it isn't, doesn't just look like a big parking lot? So it isn't exactly what our standards had we wanted, but it, it seemed to meet the intent. So it is somewhat discretionary.
So who does the builder go to, to decide what bonuses they get for the plan? Does it go before staff? Does it come here?
It goes before staff in site plan review.
Maybe a silly question, and maybe it just needs clarification, at least for me. For the parking and the bonus for the bicycle parking spaces?
Yes.
And when I read through the packet, I didn't see that there's a limit, and I was thinking, okay, if you put in a lot of, you know, even a couple of bicycle parking spaces, then you wouldn't have to have a vehicle parking space. So I thought maybe just a limit of at least of one or some, do you, are you following me?
Is there a proportion to units to bicycle spaces?
Right.
You can have a 10-unit space and put in 60, yeah, 60 bicycles.
Richard came up with that number. Do you remember exactly where that came from?
Actually, it's based on what Eugene requires, but it's sort of where I stole it from, but.
To see a limit? That there be at least one parking space?
I'm sorry?
Or, I'd like to see a limit included for a vehicle parking space, at least one per unit, even if you have a lot of parking for bicycles. Because the way I read it was that if you had X number of bicycle parking spaces, then that would eliminate the need for vehicle parking space, and I don't agree with that.
Okay.
At least one.
You want, well, and we do require, we say elsewhere that we do require bicycle parking, so maybe that's an unnecessary.
It's, it's the bonus part of it. I, I think parking for bicycles is more and more needed all the time, there are more people riding bicycles, that's not my point. My point is that the bonus that, at least the way I read it, and I could have read it wrong, but the way that I read it sounded like if you installed enough bicycle parking spaces, that it would alleviate the need for any vehicle parking spaces.
Oh, and we don't want to do that.
Not, not to zero, no.
Or if you have a 30-unit apartment. If you had 30 units and.
Here it is, let's see.
Parking spaces, I mean, why would you have more than that?
There we go. Each 10 bicycle parking spaces reduces requirement by one vehicle space. And so you want a limit on that, or you just don't even want that? We could, oh, this is deliberation, I guess, is it? It's not a question, really.
I'm just trying to figure it out.
Hmm? No, and I think we probably have people who would like to come up.
I didn't think I was deliberating, I'm just trying to understand. I asked a question, and I'm just still trying to understand, does that mean that if enough bicycle parking spaces were provided, would that nominate the entire, would that make, could that?
I have to go to the ordinance and see exactly how it's worded, do you have it right there?
I don't have it in front of me, no.
Okay.
Okay, it's on PDF page 44, whenever you get to the packet.
So, yeah, that's all it says, so, you know, maybe we need to clarify that. So, yeah, that's all it says, so, you know, maybe we need to clarify that.
Were there questions?
No? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now is the time for public comment and testimony. Please state your name only. Did I see somebody sign up again back there? Okay, John, come on up.
Good evening, John Oxenholt. This is actually something that I'm quite passionate about. I know that locally, we're known for our hospitality and construction companies, but actually, what I do is, the majority of my time is actually spent investing, and owning, and managing multifamily projects throughout the state, as well as the Southwest. And, I think one of the reasons why I'm so passionate about it is, this town needs rentals. It needs monthly rentals. It doesn't only need affordable rental, it needs rentals just across the spectrum, all price points. And, and it's, and it's not just unique to this town. You take towns like Primeville, Madras, Bend, there's a same shortage across the board. And there's not very much development. You contrast that with Portland, Seattle, and there's lots of multifamily development. I think there's a lot of reasons for that. One of the reasons is that markets like this are considered tertiary markets. They're more difficult to finance. They're also not big enough for the large multifamily development players. And, so, when I see my own employees, you know, looking and struggling to find homes, actually, what we're doing now is, we're building rentals throughout Lincoln City. We currently have three projects we've just completed, and two more underway. The surest way, I think, so that's kind of just all a preface to my comment, to my public testimony on this, proposed ordinance amendments. I think the surest way to encourage additional rental units to be built in any town is to simplify the process, lower the cost, and add flexibility. Personally, I don't think that there's anything terribly broken with the current multifamily ordinance in Lincoln City. I think it's actually pretty fair and clear as to what you can do, and we do have a project of right around 100 units that we're looking at on land that we already own. I think that, and I very much respect this planning department, matter of fact, I really think you guys made the right decision to give them some additional authority to propose amendments, because I think usually they're the first ones that see what's wrong and what's broken, and how it can be fixed. I think it's great that you put a release valve on minor adjustments that might be necessary. But on this thing, I think there's some unintended consequences in its current form, that I think most of the pictures I saw, I think I saw some pictures that looked like it was the Pearl District, where I do own property, but where it costs, you know, that, that type of development, you're just not going to see in the city of Lincoln City. So, I think that what's, I mean, density is great, if you want to add density, I think the easiest way to do that is just to lower, you know, just make it a clear way, whether than, rather than a complicated way. But I think here, we got a little too focused on the design elements. That being said, I very much care about design, but it can add to the cost, and when you also dictate where parking lots have to be located, keeping in mind that a lot of the multifamily sites here are sloped sites, it just overcomplicates the process. So, I would just encourage, actually, maybe, and the planning department did reach out, I think, to a number of folks, and I applaud them for that, so I would just encourage taking a little bit more time to relook at the proposed amendments, and find a way to maybe simplify some of them, and tweak, tweak them a bit. Those are my comments.
Before you, your, your second statement was the expense, reduce the expense of development. Do you have any, any ideas and guidance in that direction?
You know, I think the city's already taken a great step forward by reducing system and development charges. I think that's where it really starts, and there's only so much that the city can do, you know, in fairness, I mean, so, I think, you know, encouraging it, which this planning department is encouraging for multifamily development, but I think system development charges is the biggest thing, and I think that you guys have already done that. That frankly makes it more encouraging to myself, as well as others, but keeping it simple. It's, you know, the ordinances, when it's kind of like, you don't know, and there's more, I think, as you said, I think more, less certainty to what you can do, I think that doesn't help anything, so.
So, you're basically, the bonuses idea doesn't sit well with you?
Well, I mean, I think if you're going to do bonuses, and it's density, just reduce the density. In other words, rather than 20, 250 square feet, make it 2,000 or 1,500, if that's what the city wants to do, or rezone and make more shovel-ready land available. Because, well, the zoning maps, I think, show that there's a lot of land available. Actually, a lot of that land does not have full city services to it, and a lot of it is topographically challenged, which just adds to the cost of it. So, I mean, as the zoning ordinance sits today, we're currently considering a very large investment in a large project. I think with this proposal, as well, as well-intentioned as it is, to me, on the face of it, it would make it much likely, much less likely that we would move forward with that.
You're considering a large development without even considering, without taking these bonuses into consideration?
Correct.
If they allowed you these bonuses, you wouldn't build the project?
It's not about the bonuses, I think, we, you know, there's several slides on the bonuses, but there's also been several slides on the design elements, and...
Parking...
And five and six-story buildings that you couldn't even build under, you know, in this city. And, so, the more that you add additional requirements and discretion for design for the city, I mean, I applaud that. I think if you see what we do in this town, we care very much about design. Matter of fact, we're breaking ground this month on a project, multifamily project in Newport. We've already built some, what I call apartment homes, that are actually detached apartment cottages, but there's also a demand for, we're now breaking ground on...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, what city?
Newport.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so I encourage you all to look at it. It's something that I think will demonstrate that we care about design. So, I'm not saying that's not important, and I just think that adding too much discretion on the part of the city, and making it too much of a, you have to have your parking in the back, even if, even if there's not a publicly facing street, it doesn't take, it doesn't allow flexibility for the unique topography that we have here. So, the current proposals, to me, looking at them, and I have not had a chance to do an in-depth review, but they add additional design requirements, which add to the cost, and they require different parking configurations than the current zoning does.
Any questions for Strohksenholt? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Is there any more testimony from members of the audience? Are there any comments from representatives of public agencies? I'm sorry.
Before you talk about closing the meeting, I'd like to make a recommendation on that. So, go ahead with your hearing party. I didn't want to interrupt.
That's all right. Are there any comments from representatives of public agencies? And now, the next thing is a motion to close.
Okay. The reason I wanted to interrupt you there is because I have a couple developers who have asked to have a meeting, so that we could talk about this more next week. And, I also have scheduled an opportunity to go to the Ridge Apartments. They have a group that meets on Sundays, and so, I'm going to go talk to apartment dwellers, and see what they think about this, and see if I have missed anything that's important to them, or if I've overemphasized things that aren't. And so, I would just like to be able to report back to you about those conversations before you close the hearing. So, I would recommend that you keep it open until your next meeting.
Can I ask the chair? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Close the hearing, or close the record?
I, I don't want them to close either one.
That's, Mr. Chair, actually, I was on the same page with you. Just with John, the only one here, I'd love to hear from more contractors, and more builders, and if...
Right. So, I'd like to make a motion to keep the public hearing, the public record open.
I would second that. All heartedly.
Well, a continuance of the hearing, I, do you have a date that you're, you're talking about?
March 15th.
March 15th, next meeting.
Until March 15th.
The appropriate motion might be to continue the hearing until March 15th.
Make a motion to continue the hearing until March 15th, 2016, in this room at 6:00 p.m.
I resecond that.
Does that close the public, does that close the public testimony? I don't know.
No.
These are open. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Kate, would you call a roll on that, please?
Griffiths?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Aye.
Ogland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Could I just say one thing?
Sorry?
Could I just say one thing? That I hope that with Debra's conversation with everybody, that with developers, builders, and tenants, that they be as specific as possible, so she's able to grasp the kernel of what you're interested in.
So, the city council will hold a public hearing on this matter on March 28th, Monday, March 28th. I believe that's still true.
Yes, that's still true.
Right. All right. All right, that's it. Old business, we have non-scheduled, new business, non-scheduled reports and comments from community development director?
I have none.
City attorney? Planning commissioners? So, do we have public comments on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing? All right, future agenda items and next meetings. Our next meeting is March 15th, which will be a public hearing on proposed amendments to the municipal code and comprehensive plan, all relating to implementation of the 2015 Lincoln City transportation system plan, and I presume continuation of this. Okay, adjourned.